Y'all please rise. I'd like to ask the Pastor Dave Conley, Saint Mary's Church, to come forward and give us our invitation. My pastor. There you go. Thank you for being here.
God, we thank you this day for those people who have offered themselves in leadership. In anxious times, we more often than not sabotage rather than support good leadership. This day, we give you thanks for those who try to lead. We pray to give you thanks as well that in every generation, in every place you have elected, you have chosen people to make your will known regardless of office. So may we hear your voice this day in this time, a voice calling for peace and for justice for those without choice. May we live and may we lead in such a way that all of us might grow in your kingdom. Your holy name that we pray. Amen.
You'll join me with the five of wings, please. Let the leaders of the United States of America, for which we stand, one nation, proud and visible, liberty and justice for all. Called to order, this session of the Cape Girard City Council, November 7th, 2016. Thank you all for being here on comments after Robo. Wayne, Owen, here. Robo, here. Rodney Gard, here. Jake for Gun, here. Shelley Moore, here. Perry Rediger, here. Joseph Luzer, here.
Hey, again, thank you all for being here. This is a little unusual, we're not in the city council chambers. We have passed on to Red Star area for a council meeting. We wanted to reach out to other areas. And this was our time to come down to Shawnee. So thank you for being here. We have one microphone. It might be a little hard maybe to hear. If it is, we'll pass the microphone and ask council to speak out. I think we're gonna be okay. We get along fine during the study session. But we want to be able to let everybody be able to hear and participate in this session. Again, thank you for being here.
Council, the agenda now is the adoption of the agenda. Oh, by Gun and second by Guard. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Snap. Shelley, do you want to introduce the Snap presentation, please?
Yes. Felicia, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm about to do it then. Felicia, Cape, Red Star, City Council meeting. And her son had been. And she was very distraught and we met. I met her and I told her I would come to her home and we talked. We had a lot of flowers and knocking on doors and playing. So she's here to give a presentation on the outcome of the city.
Felicia, welcome.
Hi, I'm Felicia Robinson. I live on 822 South Spring Street in Cape.
Who's with you?
I'm Cape Hood. As a Snap, we're happy you're here.
Okay. Wow. Happy year. Yeah, listen, if you go behind, you can't hear yet.
Oh.
Which is right, you can't hear behind. We're a little temporary here. We're holding. There we go, okay.
Now Snap was formed because of my son, was addressed to shootings and murders. My son, they had a person with him coming up in November 15. And that has propelled me to go out in the streets because 60 people were standing there and nobody would say anything. Been going on the streets of Cape Girard on the south side, discussing homelessness, poverty, and employment, so on and so on. We have currently become, to become part of the neighborhood initiative development at Red Star. We pray from block to block on the south side. And now with the new year coming up, we want to rebuild on the south side of Cape. And so we want to work with that.
So one of the things that we're wanting to ask is, is there anything in the plans or the city to start working in South Cape area?
Yes.
Can you share some of that?
Well, not really at this point. But we've got a group coming in next week and we're gonna be, start a new initiative that we've been, we've traveled to Atlanta, Georgia. We've got a program that we're gonna be bringing forth. We have the areas identified, we don't have the strategic plan. We've got a plan that has been successful, not only through Atlanta, but to 15 cities now around the nation. They're helping those cities, they're gonna be helping us. We're gonna follow their plan. They're really enthusiastic about it. So shortly, you're gonna be hearing more and more about it.
So will you reach out to any of the leaders or the churches in the South Cape area about this?
It's actually gonna be, it's gonna be your plan. It's not gonna be our plan. It'll be your plan. That's one of the successes. A lot more to come, just that if I can confidently look you in the eye tonight and say, yes.
I love that. One of the things we've been doing, we've been going out knocking on doors. And one of the things that we have been asking in the last couple of months is, what type of changes do you want to see in this community? The main things that we have been hearing is for the violence to stop and for activities for kids. Every street corner you go on out here, you've got kids gathered because there's nothing out here for them to do. If you go out here in this gymnasium right now and look at all these kids that are out there, you'll see our faces of white children out there. There's no other ethnic group that's in there. Out here in this community, you can't afford to pay the fees that you had to pay to join things like this. So there needs to be some type of program where activities are started for these kids. Because we've got to get kids off the streets and it's a community problem, not just a South Cape problem.
No question.
So.
Or Gun.
All right.
You're all opposed.
I'm definitely gonna help you do it. That's the main thing that people are wanting to see. And they see no action that's going on. The last killing that happened after in South Cape. The streetlights anywhere around there, no sidewalks, trees are hanging down low until we start cleaning up some of these communities and getting them lit. We're not gonna stop the violence out there.
Does that sound good? We've seen it, yeah. We've seen it.
Well, what's happening? And that's why we're here, because we need to start.
And I've been frustrated too, because I've known, we've known, council's known, you've known, everybody's known, we need to do something. And I've been there over six years now and we really are, where we work. But I think we found a plan and a program that will work. It's gonna, it's gonna work from inside out. It's not gonna be dictated to, not gonna come down and fix it. It's gonna be inside out. It needs a lot of partners. Partners. More about it in a minute.
You know, another thing, just like with communication though for the entire city, the young lady that was talking earlier about the garden programs, everything. I've been out there in the streets for 14 years. I had no earthly idea there could be things like this. And if I didn't, it's not. We need to find a way of publicizing what's going on so that the will is not reinvented in every area. So, you know, just like out there at the arena, you've got the big billboard that has everything posted on it. We need something out here where the people in this street can see what's happening. What's happening over there at the arena, what's happening in the O'Sage Center. All of those activities need to be posted where people out here can see.
Very good. I would like your contact information. Where are you leading?
The one thing I want to say, Felicia, that is, because of what you've been doing, it's allowed Chief Blair and the major case squad to actually be five for five consulting because people are talking. So I want you to know that. And thank you.
We appreciate that. We still find a lot of fear, you know. People still afraid in the neighborhood. We find that the children are lacking from school. That's now. So I have, the Community Councilor Center, have, as an outreach, outreach program there because of Snap. So I, I, I see that people are listening and I know it's gonna take a lot of hard work. So, you know, the mental health factor as well is going on in the neighborhood.
No question.
As a city, not just south side. So not making it a south side problem, but a city problem. And so that's why we are trying to make, develop communication with the, and hopefully with what the mayor has to present, we all can make that happen.
You, Snap itself has kept Red Star officially alive in your area. Shelley, probably wouldn't be less. So you've got, there's a spark there. So thank you. And thank you for coming to the conference. Thank you for the information. And I'll leave, leave without it. Okay, communications reports. Council, as I discussed, we'll have several this evening. Number one, Election Day tomorrow. Everyone's in votes, mom. Spaghetti Day. Parks Foundation, spaghetti day, spaghetti day is Thursday, 11 to 7 at Arena. Tursed over 3,000 last year. It's a great, great project for fundraising for the Parks Foundation. I participated in two little free library dedications. One across from St. Mary's Playground and then one at the Police Department last week. A box that has books in it that children can bring their book, get a book, bring a book back, take a book, and they just are self-serving. That has been very successful in some other cities. I was not aware of this program. I think it has, it has far reaching effects and really enthused that, the president from the Police Department, the chief, that we can expand that program in the, in the areas that the police have been talking about. The National Hunger and all, so awareness press conference, that'll be next Monday, 10 a.m. at Cape West, Lordwood Theaters, 10 a.m. I was to participate this morning in an assembly and recognition at Cape Central High School, saluting the state championship boy swimming team where they, and we are working to, you know, they're working to honor the, honor the city and Red, and bring attention to the city statewide. Also, in the, past the, into the semifinals of the class four A football. Also, we're in the midst, and I, council, council attended the downtown education plan first meeting there. That will be coming forth as we, as we move along. Everything I have as a council. Just for council, remind you, there's notes in your agenda packets as well as the minutes for the advisory boards. The, I did attend a South Beach Regional Municipal League meeting on the 20th of last month. We're gonna have the next regional meeting, which will be in Cape in April. Residential leaf collection, you can track the, you can track the leaf truck online at thecityofcape.org/leaf. Start picking up the leaves now, so it's early starting to pick up. And then the city holidays, we are off this Friday for Veterans Day. And then there will be off Thanksgiving Day and the day after as well. We traded the day for the day after Thanksgiving. So that's the reason we're off the day after Thanksgiving. Mr. Mayor, I did mention this earlier, but I'm a veteran member. Remind people that this Friday, Veterans Day, buy an event, a location, a place to honor our nation's veterans. There's a significant number of places you could do so, all better communities. So the event, the DFW, from 8 to 10 that morning, but encourage people to take advantage of the options. Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have one public hearing, denied public hearing to consider a request to rezone property of 627, 631, and 635 South Spring Street from C1, General Commercial to CBD, Central Business District. Public hearing is open for anyone that wants to appear before the council on this side. Public hearing is open.
I have something to say about the habitat and humanity area.
This is a public hearing for South Spring Street.
I understand that, but you should let me know when I can bring this up.
Okay, we'll close that public hearing and since no one, council will debate team as we go through the new ordinances. Now, anyone to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Hey, ma'am, well, we don't have that on the agenda this evening unless it's a point in time when we do take things that are on the agenda. Our council, study session at 5 p.m. Take any subject, whether it's on or not on agenda. But we appreciate you coming to the next meeting, sir. Permissible again?
Is this before you approve that plan?
It's not on the agenda, even for the first, not on the agenda this evening. For information, I think if they change the plan, which our red paper was, they're planning on changing the plan, it has to go back to plan and zoning first. If they change, we haven't seen it yet.
We haven't seen it.
We got it in the mail today. That was your point. They have a new plan.
Well, we'll receive it. It needs to go, it needs to go to.
You might want to check when plan and zoning will be called, I saw.
Okay. But the point is that you're saying.
Right.
We have a new plan, we'll go to PNC first. Right, so I'm just trying to make sure that you know that's your first opportunity to weigh in, we'll be there, and we encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for the council? If it is on the agenda. Okay, Eric, you'll take a swing with the consent.
16-188, for President, Governor, Governor, Senator, 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 2, number 16-192, Resilience, Shadr, City Manager, executive contract with Brandon, number 11, Hill, and L.C., for the state, 16-199, Resolution authorizing City Manager, execute first, with the city manager, consider funding, grant, in November 1, 2015, for the state of the state.
Council, seven agendas, are there a motion for approval? Senator Bure, move by Gun. Second, and Senator Buren. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would like my votes on 4, 9, 11, 13 to be marked staying due financial reasons for employment.
4, 9, 11, and 13, Trish, get them. Okay, any other discussion?
Could the city manager give a brief explanation prior to number seven, change the CBP organization structure?
Yes, the question was regarding the change in the, we've had, the CBP agreement has been pretty much the same for some time. They've asked to redo it a little early because of their views. And so while we're doing that, we did review through the entire agreement. There were some things in there from agreements where, if they sold that location, a lot of those things have all been taken care of. Two things, one of the things that, the reason why we changed structure was, there were two things. There was a, a executive board and then there was a task force. And those really served as some oversight. And so what we did was, we combined those into an executive board, our three members from the chamber, one of them is the chamber president by title, and then there's three from the city, and one of that is the city manager by title. By, the chief of the city, we appointed by council. But from the chamber, we get appointed by their board. So there's a change of that, it's cleaner, it gives them actually all this of duties as well, and talks about the judiciary responsibilities and those type of things.
It's more parallel to whatever you do at the show center.
Absolutely, thank you for pointing that out. It's the same type of thing we do with the Showman Center and the River, there's about three from each entity there as well. So it worked pretty well, good oversight, a good industry oversight as well for those boards, so that's the reason for it, thank you.
So most of these people need to get out of here because they're here for the same thing. We need to know when to be back here, when we can discuss the habitat for humanity. Because that's why most of these people are here.
I'll come outside, I can. I'm gonna have to ask you to step back. Come on out.
We need to know when to be back here, when we can discuss the habitat for humanity. Because that's why most of these people are here.
I'll come outside, I can. I'm gonna have to ask you to step back. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. New ordinances, number 14, bill number 16-190, an ordinance amending the schedule of City of 16, section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinance City, Cape Girard, Luzera, by establishing a stop sign on Hazel Street, first grade. Second? Second by Guard. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 16-191, an ordinance approving the record plan of the Blue, for, it's three, first three. All of them, move back. Second by Fox. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would like my vote to be of staying due to financial reasons for employment.
Okay, you have that?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 16, bill number 16-193, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute Cape Block, Grand Green, Luzera Highway and Transportation Commission for an aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle for the Pearl Airport, first grade, some moves, move by Bowen.
Second?
Seconded by Gun. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, this is funded 92% by the state, which means that is not a capital expense, we have otherwise taken a fire sales tax on the revenue basis. Eight plus year old fire apparatus.
That we've been working on, staff been working on for a while. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 17, bill 16-194, an ordinance authorizing execution of an aircraft, our operative assistant agreement for the fiscal year 2016, with Luzera Highway, which is a, to lead by Bowen.
Second?
Seconded by Gun. Any discussion?
Aye.
Bill number 16-198, an ordinance amending chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance City, Cape Girard, Luzera, by changing the building and property located at 61731, South Street Street, City County, Cape Girard, Luzera, from C1 to CBD. Box? Second, seconded by Bowen. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would like my vote to be marked staying due to financial reasons.
Okay, number 18. I would count, it's good to see a very visible property filled again. It's been vacant for a while and good to see that moving forward. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Three appointments tonight, first they're appointed to the public library, board of directors, and it was discussed during our work session, I have a recommendation for John Fox, as I hear a motion. Some moves? Move by Bowen.
Second?
And seconded by Guard. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? House Force Advisory Board, these are reapportments of Mark Urban and Keith Sanderson.
Some move?
Move by Guard. Seconded by Gun. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The South Beach Planning Organization are central board of directors and votes are by position. Mayor, myself, the city manager Scott Meyer with alternates, Mayor Brotim, Gun, and Development Services Director Alex McElroy, prepare the motion.
Gun? Second?
Seconded by Guard. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?